When a call to order, the special city council meeting of Tuesday, July 23rd. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution, our Constitution stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Under the text of the flag of the Constitution, the Constitution is the essence, the one that governs. Under God, and on earth, in this world.
Let him 1.1. Anybody signed up? At this time, we'd like to listen to any member of the audience, excuse me, on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes. For each speaker shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Angela Cervantes.
Angela Cervantes, 2534 Loganberry Circle. Can you push that button? The one that says push.
I cannot get on this.
Okay, Angela Cervantes, 2534 Loganberry Circle. Good evening, council. I'm standing before you today to inform and clarify the movement taking place within our city. I've spoken with many of you. Some of you are nice individuals, but our city is hurting, and we need people willing to speak up for their constituents and not just be a rubber stamp. Our city is at a crossroads, and this moment in time will determine the pathway forward. Growth and change are inevitable. The TechStop project is a prime example of this, causing the shuttering of many businesses and sources of revenue for Seabrook. With that being said, our city is only as strong as our ability to react and pivot in the face of these adversities. This is where our frustration begins. With the expansion of 146, our small community has lost around 70 businesses and 50 actual storefronts. Terrible, yes, but outside of Seabrook's control. Once the construction ended, it became time to re-energize and redevelop our city. You all rose to this challenge by eliminating the one single position in the city that was responsible for retaining and seeking out new businesses for Seabrook. What? So now, this position responsible, wait, I'm sorry. So now, this responsibility lies on the shoulders of our city manager, who arguably has proven over and over again, without recourse, her incompetence to even perform her primary job. When this exact topic was brought up recently as an agenda item by Councilwoman Rasko, she questioned Ms. Cook how many businesses she had checked in on since taking this responsibility. Ms. Cook refused to answer the question, and then responded to Councilwoman Rasko, "You're getting off topic. This is the exact topic." This leads to our next frustration. Your inability to properly oversee the duties of our current city manager. Per our city charter, you are her bosses. Decisions she has been allowed to make and wrongly advise you all on are detrimental to our city and patrons. When she overlooked an apartment changing to Section 8 status and the city experiencing a resulting $250,000 shortfall, no action was taken. The mayor actually laughed it off, saying, "We didn't notice the first year because it was a good year." Not so funny when these oversights cause our taxpayers to go up, our taxes to go up again. When Ms. Cook provided you all with false information regarding the bid contract and successfully had you all vote on a $250,000 contract, when the $50,000 contract was what was actually needed, no action was taken. When you all learned from a concerned citizen about the chief's arrest in Webster and were told by Gail that she was handling it internally, no recourse. When Gail coordinated with attorneys and spent thousands of dollars on legal representation to study and get the best deal on a water contract with Pasadena, only to find a year later that we signed a terrible contract and y'all were forced to vote to increase residents' water bills yet again, no recourse. When she approved the restart of a non-essential waterline project 24 hours following Hurricane Barrel, causing a pipeline damage that could have exploded a home and killed numerous individuals. The one council member who questioned her decision was then called a profane name by one of you for pointing this out. This list only scrapes the very top of her mishandlings, yet many of you continue to gaslight rightfully concerned citizens and circle the wagon in defense of Ms. Cook. From arrogant comments and disregard for our citizen concerns, to a lack of leadership during a declared disaster, to an inability to take our city in the direction directly stated by our own vision and mission statement, we, the concerned citizens of Seabrook, are ready for change. Thank you.
Thank you. 2.0, or during the work session 2.1, review and discuss federal or fiscal year 2024/25 city of Seabrook operations, special funds, capital improvement program, and/or any existing or future debt service. Consider and take all appropriate action on a proposed tax rate and schedule future work sessions if applicable. Gail?
All right. Let me see if I can confidently get this up. Yep, there we go. All right, mayor and council, I'd like to present the proposed annual budget for fiscal year '25 to you. We attached a PDF that went out with the agenda into the public. This year, we do have a little bit of a change as far as the format and the presentation. But before we begin, I would like to give some special thanks to my staff, who has tremendously helped me putting this information together. Mike, our director of finance, and our assistant director of finance, and also our assistant city manager. The three of them have been invaluable, working not only directly on the budgets, but also working with the directors that it's... These are the directors that are responsible for each one of the budgets that we'll go through. Each one of those were part of the general fund, and they're responsible... Last year, if you recall, we had an administration budget that grouped a number of our admin departments together. We've broken those up. So for instance, public relations, HR, legal, those were all broken to separate cost centers so that we could better track those. So again, appreciative to my directors and their work in getting those budgets over to us. Tonight, we'll go over an agenda overview. We'll look at your strategies from your strategic plan that's still current, the current economic climate and some of the challenges there, preliminary assessed values from HCAD, budget highlights, revenue projections, and we're probably going to stop about at general fund. Once we get into this, you will realize. So the overview of your budget before you combine is we have a number of funds, as you all are well aware, general fund being our largest, and then we have enterprise fund, which is directly fee-related for water, wastewater, and sanitation primarily. And then we have a debt service fund in which we pay our debt from. And then we'll be talking about at our next special meeting, the hotel occupancy tax. So we've got applications out, and that'll be another segment of our special meeting to determine the budget on the hot fund. We've got a number of capital funds. Crime Control District and EDC were the two that were voted on by the residents. So we've got the two special districts. And then we've got a slew of special revenue funds. So all of those together, you'll be looking to approve right at $40 million. So the economic climate, I wanted to touch on a few things that I believe from our perspective on staff has definitely driven a little bit of change, or some of the items in the agendas, or, excuse me, in the budgets. So we've got COVID. We were fortunate enough to get just over $3 million. So we were able to take the COVID money and, based on the eligible projects, get the waterline, distribution line across Taylor Lake fortified. We met here recently about the additional ARPA money that was left over, so we'll put that into quality of life projects. So that was a one-time injection into our coffers that have been tremendously beneficial, but that's running to an end. We'll talk about the tax cap. So as you all know, we are bound by the state at a 3.5% state cap above our rates. Wage and market rate is really a big one for us on that third bullet point. So as you will see when we go through this, the biggest thing that we pay for are people. Almost 70% of your general fund money, that means your property tax or sales tax, go into paying people. Those are our biggest assets. Those are most valuable assets, and we continually sit with other cities and literally bargain for each other's people. We were unfortunate in that we've lost probably two to three people in this last year to other municipalities, and that's why when we do these salary surveys every three to five years, it's extremely important. We're not always able to fund what those studies come back, and that was the case last time. But we do go and with HR directors' assistants, do a salary survey every year to make sure that we're keeping our salary and our grades at market. It's extremely important. To fall behind that is a huge deficit for a city, and to catch up is really difficult to do. Lastly, HCAD, we're at the mercy of HCAD. So part of the climate that you'll talk about tonight is the fact of Mike is waiting. We probably will not get another update from Harris County Appraisal until Thursday this week, and that letter that we will get will be the pivot of the entire presentation tonight. So as you will see, they have come in lower than what we thought those values should be, and hopefully Thursday, this whole thing changes, but I'm painting what HCAD has given us the letter today. So as a recall, I know you guys are very familiar with your strategic plan. We are still working on a number of the strategies, economic development, city services, infrastructure, our engagement and branding, as well as our quality of life. So you will see that sprinkled throughout the proposed budget. As we get into the general revenue fund, these are the assumptions, so we'll start with property tax. So I just mentioned the letter that we've gotten from Harris County Appraisal District that does the appraisals on the homes, has indicated below the amount that we saw last year. So right now, this is all on the premise of what we've got at this point. Again, that's could change in a couple of days, but we have a 0%. So you will see on your property line, it is flat, meaning your number stays the same across the board. And the only thing that we can foresee based on internal reports is that we've had a number of single-family starts, and that would equate to probably around $75,000. That will probably be our only new money, for the most part, on the property side. We've had no significant new starts at this point. So last year, as you recall, we had the large warehouse that ended up being about $46 million to the good, and that was a huge carry for some of the costs that we have in the new budget last year. We are projecting a 4% sales tax increase. We are a little low right now in the last forecast and monthly report that you saw. However, we do believe in this last quarter, so we should start to see, hopefully the trends stay as in previous years, and we'll have a slight increase on that. So the 4% is where we're at. Intergovernmental has a number of different components, but with some of those components, they are decreasing, so there's a decrease in that. So this is a snippet of part of your PDF that's in your attachment for the agenda. And again, starting on the first line, if you'll see the 6.9 million, for projection reasons for this PDF, you can see again, that stays flat. We are projecting that 4% in the next line, but this just gives you a reference point if you're looking at the budget in the entirety. Breaking that down, on your general revenue, looking at that table and your sheet before, you can see again that we are deriving 44.7% of our revenues from property tax. And then the next category is your sales tax and then our transfers. So those are our three largest general fund revenues. As you look at the property taxes, it's always helpful for the residents to understand where their dollars go. So when you look at your tax bill from Harris County Appraisal, you can see that 50% of that tax bill is dedicated to CCISD. The city is next in line for about 23%, and then there's a number of special districts. The 23% that you see equates to a percent that then is broke up into two components. So you guys are well familiar going through the sales, or, excuse me, the property tax formula every year, but I broke it out here. So the first highlighted section there that you see for operating and maintenance, the 35 cents is really what operates the city and every department that we'll look at in the general fund. So for 35 cents per $100 valuation is what we're using to maintain the city in all of those departments. From there, the debt portion is calculated each year, so whatever the anticipated debt payments are, Mike collects those, and that goes into a worksheet that then we also have to publish, and that will be, you know, what it is. So we've got payments that are reaching the end, a little bit higher at the end of the debt payment, so the debt you will see is changing for this upcoming projection. It's always good and always get the question of how do we stack up against other municipalities around us? So for '24 on the adopted rates, I just took a snippet here to kind of show you. We adopted just at '46. Some of our neighboring communities are at '43, Lake City at 40, and then we've got some others, Deer Park, Laporte, in Baytown in the '70s, and then there at the bottom you can see Webster and Lake Jackson in the '30s as well. So big mixture. Everybody's a little bit different, depending on what their tax base is. If you have chemical plants in your city, which we don't, that's obviously a huge driver. Love sitting around with cities that, you know, can go through a salary survey and completely fund it 100%, $2 or $3 million and not blink, but we don't have that privilege. So the ad valorem tax rates, as you can see, from going back to 2013, we were in the '60s, and we've steadily declined that. Our values have gone up steadily year over year. Again, this is going to be a little bit different this year because the values have, at the very least, come to at least a static from last year. But we are just trending down over those last few years steadily. The revenue that we derive, again, is attached directly to the assessed values that come off those tax rolls. So again, we're estimating on this last column on your far right, that we're still at that $1.7 billion in total assessed. And that, what that means is after the exemptions come off. So if we're at a $2 billion, which we've been, assessment from HCAD, once the exemptions come off, it's approximately 1.7. That's what we can calculate then what the revenues are. So we've been steadily with some really great growth rates this, right now, based again on the letter, we're estimating no more than about 2%. General fund revenues, again, this equates to dollars and what you looked at on the spreadsheet earlier in the presentation. So we are estimating very flat, just at $7 million or just below. Sales tax is the second revenue. So we were trucking along very well. As we discussed, we had COVID, we had online sales that surprised the heck out of us. When we were thinking we were going to be hurting, we actually were improving. We went through the 146 expansion project. As you guys know, we have, we still have 800,000 stuck side because we didn't know how our sales tax was, sales tax was going to react during these last five years. We've continued to see that growth, but we are starting to see that slowdown. And so if you do read some articles, I took the liberty this weekend of going across the country, this is a trend, the consumerism with our tourism partners here in the Bay Area, you're starting to see it. Those consumer trends are starting to slow down a little bit. So we, the 4% that I'm approving, I hope is a good number based on our best trend of what we're seeing. I feel comfortable with that amount, but it is starting to be a little bit of a slowdown. The next slide is just also a comparison. If you want to compare yourself to other people in our area, you can again see that this decline on the sales tax is not unique to Seabrook, but it's also a direct reflection, again, of the consumerism and the changes that we're starting to see. So some of our partners on year-to-date are hurting worse than us, some not so bad, but overall, you can start to see just sort of the region and the trend in that area. Some of the highlights that you will notice as we go through this budget, again, HCAD, we're hoping that we reach back over that $2 billion mark. The budget at this year has zero new positions. We've been fortunate to slowly add to our growth needs within departments over the last several years. That's not the case. We are going to be looking at a deficit budget, and there are no new positions at this time. Last year, we were also able to do a cost of living adjustment. So if you recall, we have two different things that drive our employees' salaries. So we refer to a step program, and the step program on the civilian side is 2.5%. So once an employee's here 12 months, and each 12 months is their anniversary date, they progress through that step system. And the civil, or the civil service employees, their step is 3%. So right now, what we're looking at, we've got what we call the step turned on, so it's 2.5% for civilian and 3% for civil service, with no cost of living on top of that. What is something to note is we also have a 10% insurance adjustment this year. We had 10% last year. So we've had 20% that's hit our employees. So those, in other words, that have spouse coverage or family coverage, they're already in the hole. So again, benefits are huge, employees are huge, and taking care of our employees is huge. And so as we go through this, some of the solutions and ideas will be contingent on that, and that's just one of the things to highlight. We cover our property, our liability, and our workers' compensation through TML, a subsidiary, TML IRP. That, as a blended rate, did go up, so we were also looking at 7% increase in that. And then, just like last year, most of our contracts that most of our directors are dealing with have gone up, and in some cases substantially. Here's a snapshot, again, of what we have taken a look at. So at the bottom, you can see that we got the preliminaries, and last year, we were over that $2 billion mark. With exemptions, we're still at the $2 billion, and at the onset of this one, we're looking at a pretty good change. Again, please hear me, once the letter comes back from Harris County, this could change. One of the things Mike and I reviewed just before this meeting is some cities will be much farther along in this process than we are by setting their budget. We've always been conservative, and conservative for this reason. Harris County, when they give you the estimate, and then by the time you get your certified rolls, can be vastly different. We had a neighboring community that this was tested tremendously on last year, and it ended up that they were $10 million off. So larger city, but still the same premise. They took the numbers in the first letter, they set the budget on it, they set the new positions, they set the colas, and $10 million had to be instantly cut. So we're expecting to be very cautious in our process, and we'll continue to do that. But I do want to point out, there's two different methodologies to this, two different approaches. Some cities, go ahead and take that first letter, and you'll see their budgets and their agendas are much further along. General fund reserves, so we are still extremely healthy. We have not drawn down on most of our reserves. You'll see that we have some ideas for starting to, on one-time purchases, dip into our savings. We're extremely healthy. We have the 25% required emergency reserve at 3.7. We have the committed fund, the 1.6, that we still have from the Port of Houston settlement, and that leaves us approximately 3.5 in unreserved funds. So overall, the 8.8 million, extremely healthy when you look at our budget and what our expenditure is on an annual basis. Looking at expenditures on this slide, again, just to note, personnel is our highest expenditure and our most important expenditure. I think we were a little over 70% last year, so we're still at that 70% mark, and this is our highest and most important expense. The next few slides, again, if you want to follow in your PDF on your tablets, or I'm going to run through some of the highlights in each one of the departments that could have changed our bottom line, and then we'll go into having a discussion on the tax rate. So these departments, as we run through the next few slides, are all funded, again, by your general fund. That means your property tax and predominantly your sales tax and the transfers. So we have the Legislative Department, and that makes up your department as far as City Secretary's Office, the stipends or expense reimbursements, and some other expenses. That, this year, is slotted to have an election expense for $23,000. That will be covering the May election. And then also, there's a proposal, this was a decision package that right now is in and the budget, that's for scanning. So we have a number of paper documents still. We have an online library that's getting built out and from this point forward, but playing catch-up and making sure that we have all of those files digitized. This is a tremendous expense, but it is a one-time expense. This is in the budget as it stands today. In finance, most of our departments, again, you'll notice are pretty flat. These are just some expenses that you'll notice are a little bit higher on that last column as far as percentages. Appraisal district fees. So this is driven, we pay HCAD to do the appraisals, to collect the taxes, to give it to the city. So that is a fee that's out of our control, but it is steadily going up every year. So there's an $18,000 increase. For administration, we currently have an architectural fee that was approved for the police station that we probably will not be paying out, so that is expensed in the following year. Consulting and planning, and then insurance, and the insurance under administration, that's my department, but we, the way we're cost-centering each one of these, when we talked about TML insurance, all the property and liability comes out of the administration budget. So that's part of the 7% increase. Our IT, we have a number of different expenses that have gone up as far as our software packages, Microsoft Office being one of the big ones. This is equating to just over $50,000 in the budget. However, feel note on this one, we'll talk about prior use funds. So we do have some additions that offset this cost rider on the $50,000. GIS, there's been some reorganization in that, so you'll see some significant savings in our salaries and overall decrease. So nothing that's too high on the GIS side. Our HR, again, reorganization, we've reclassified a position, and then we're also doing some changes as far as HR. Again, being a small city, you typically don't see payroll being processed in HR along with everything else that they have to do. So finance has done some reorganization, and we've moved payroll over there. And again, we're doing what a small city does. We haven't added a person, we just added the duties. Emergency services, we have an update to the AEDs, so the devices that you see sprinkled throughout our buildings are in need of updating, so those checks and inspections do come with a cost. That's under emergency services. Public affairs, again, this is our, a new department, and we're starting to itemize these. So while these are not huge numbers, these are costs that we're starting to put in this particular department. They may have been captured in other areas. Legal, this is also a new department. We are assuming in the legal department, the part-time position that helps the prosecutor. So when we started this department, everything was lumped in municipal court. We had the prosecutor contract, as well as the judge, two different functions. So we negotiated to pull legal out, and we'll have the prosecutor over there. We now have the part-time assistant position, as well as legal counsel that assists with city council. Department 200 is our public safety. We've done some rearranging in the far-right box that you see over there. We have a DOT department. We are down to two officers as far as certification, so we've made the move to properly cost account for those. So two is the decrease that you're seeing on the DOT side, but that's been moved over to public safety. So you'll see a bump in salaries there. That's just reorganizing. That's just reorganizing according to their duties that's happening right now. Animal Control, this one kind of highlights and didn't absorb it at all, but the HVAC contract that you guys approved here recently, this is a smaller department, and you're seeing that year-over-year kind of being highlighted a little bit more. The next department is the Fire Department. This has not only the contract with the Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department, which at this point is flat, we've met with them, and there's no proposed significant increase on the volunteer contract side. This also is the department that is expenses for the Fire Marshal, and so we are proposing for some additional assistance in that area. The Fire Marshal serves not only in that capacity, but for emergency management, and then also for overseeing our EMS department. So three-plus hats in that area. Building and Maintenance, as well as also being increased in this budget. Our EMS Department, this one has a number of rental and service agreements that we talked about, contracts are going up, slight increase in that area. And then with the new vehicle that we're getting, slight increase in the maintenance auto as we're situating the old ones and bringing in the new one. For our Parks Department, this one, take pause here just to make special notation. So we've taken a significant decrease out of your Parks budget, however, that's significantly on the pool. We don't have the seasonal pool, so you can see that's been zeroed out, as well as taking a pretty significant decrease off our supplies. This would be all contingent on what City Council does next, as far as your capital that goes on a bond project. And we are waiting on the concept drawings and pictures from our consultant, so we're hoping to have that, if not at the next meeting, the following after that, so that we can begin to decide what you would like to do with that project. Electrical has gone up. We used to have an electrician on staff, he's no longer with us, and so we are starting to absorb those costs back to a contract when needed. Utilities have gone up, and also with the number of city events, there is a need for additional monies in that account. The Streets Department, we continue to move forward, again, pending any other direction from City Council, but the enormous sidewalk replacement list, the contracts have proven from last year to be able to knock out two to three significant areas in subdivisions. So right now, in your budget proposed, it's another $100,000 to continue doing contract and looking at those areas in large swaths. Create, Career Ladder, we will talk about, we did some pretty good strides on a succession plan, and there were some things that came out of that. There's some additional monies in this area that we are looking to give our employees some growth. A career ladder, if you would say, of, for instance, Position 1, 2, and 3, based on their skill set, that will help kind of give some motivation in that area for our Maintenance Department. Community Development, nothing really there to report. Overall, there's a decrease in that department. And then the Court Department, again, that part-time assistant position, and they've also taken some cost savings off General Fund. They have a number in the back of your budget book, you'll notice a lot of court-related special funds, so they're able to use some of those as an eligible cost, and move those away from General Fund. Any questions so far? So again, these are some challenges that we have. There's a couple of slides after this, it's going to be a challenge, but I want to walk Council through this, and definitely ask for your leadership and your knowledge of where you want to go next. So again, talking about our employees and how important they are, the challenge is keeping those salaries at market. We will hopefully continue in the city to do those salary studies every three to five years. Again, what we do in the in-between is significantly important to make sure that you don't have a balloon payment in three to five years. The known and unknown retirements, we'll talk about the succession planning, we've got a number of our employees that are eligible to retire. What that means is it puts us at risk. We've got some very high-level employees with a huge amount of historical knowledge, and so making sure that we keep them happy, secure, and a good environment is extremely important. We also have workloads. We've talked about this over and over again, and then as our generational change is happening in our workforce here locally, you know, wearing three to four hats has always been sort of a Seabrook way because we're a small municipality. That's getting increasingly hard, I think, sometimes with the expectations from the community, or just internally. And unfortunately, sometimes I think technology is added to this, but I think it's just a challenge that we have. So we are trying to keep making sure that we can spread that, giving our employees options, and a lot of times that's welcome, a lot of times it's not. Also, decision packages, we'll look at this in just a minute. There's a lot of decision packages that typically we cannot fund, but this is something we have to look at every year. Sometimes we can look at those one-time costs, but if it's reoccurring costs, we have to make sure we can sustain that moving on in the future. So this is Snapshot. This is after a meeting with all the directors. So what they do is the budget's before you. If there's a significant change in what they're proposing in their budgets to me, they have to fill out what's called a decision package. So some of these that are checked off are in your proposed budget, or we found alternate funding sources for them. The ones that are not checked are things that we are still looking for options to be able to fund. And again, this is proposed budget tonight, with the understanding that we'll come back to you on the 31st with some proposed changes based on the comments tonight. So right now, you have your election expense in, the scanning is in. We're not able, at this point, to fund COLA. Was hoping to get a 2% COLA in there, that's at this point $137,000. We've got reclassifications to that market comment that I made, $50,000. Upgrades on software for open records, 16. We have a request immediate for HR Specialist, 64. HR software, evaluation software, 3,000. A new position in Streets, 95. New position in our maintenance area, 62. And these are all-inclusive with benefits. Reclassification and upgrade for a court clerk position at 5. So all in, the ones that are not checked, we're still looking at above and beyond the deficit that you're looking at for another $400,000. So Succession Planning. So this is something that was in your strategic plan. HR Department has done a tremendous job and has spent months and months working on this. Really, the bottom line for Council, as far as your leadership of this city, I think it's important. We talked about the number of employees that can retire, but we also look at what it means to be built out. So we have very limited space left in the city for built-out, and we understand that. But if given a blank piece of paper, after talking to each director, there are needs, some are more high-prioritized than others, but overall, in summary, we are looking at, if we could fund them, a need at this point of about 21 new positions on the civilian level. We have also immediate need for two additional police officers at the civil service level, and so all in all, you can see that if money were not an issue, we're looking at additional need of approximately about 1.5 million. Stop there before we get to how the tax rate is put together. Any questions?
Just one, on the election expense with the recall, the pending recall, wouldn't that have to be added in there? Because I assume that they're not going to wait for the regular election in May.
That's correct. I mean, I think it's around $15,000 per election?
I don't know, I'm just asking.
15 to 20.
15 to 20, okay.
So our recall would cost that much for a city?
That's per election, right. Okay. So I like to put these slides in every year. I know it's a dusting-off process. Mike lives and eats and breathes this every day, but this is the formula on what our tax rate's made up. So again, we talked about that first 35 cent number, that's the M&amp;O, that's what it takes to go through all of those departments and fund those. And then the interest in sinking, or the debt, is the second portion of your tax rate. So when we talk about M&amp;O and INS, the worksheet that's on the website, all of those correlate back to these formulas. Your no-new revenue rate, again, is what we are looking at for the same properties last year, what HCAD's reevaluating those, and then if you put that into a formula, what that tax rate looks like. So the state now calls that the no-new revenue rate, or you'll see, again, on worksheets, NNR. So it calculates your tax rate that will derive the same amount of revenue on the properties, on the rolls, last year. The important thing to note on this is the new stuff is important, because as you can see, as we go through this, if we don't have new, then we're pretty much the same, which means when we load the new budget, we're already at usually about 3.5% to 5%, because we've loaded all the new expenses. So we are already behind if we're not getting some new development, new businesses. The voter approval rate, or the VAR, is when you take your no-new revenue rate, which is the same from last year, to get the same amount of revenue, the state's cap of 3.5%, which is the highest that we can go, and then whatever debt that we have out, that percentage is calculated by the Finance Department, and that's the last part of that formula. All of that combined is what we call the voter approval rate, or the rate that Council can go at the highest before they would have to have an election to go over that. So in summary, where are we? The budget before you in PDF form, and again, this is changing, there will be some additional amendments, but the draft general budget right now is showing a deficit of $313,682. We are using, in this scenario, 257,500 from prior, prior-year funds basically offset. So we have, for instance, in the Police Department, a software package that's been in design with League City for, this is, I think, our third year. So we have $168,000 sitting in your Police Department as an expense. We've budgeted for it, we're going to roll it over because it wasn't spent last year. So that basically zeroes that expense. You'll see it in your department, but we also are bringing the cash forward. So those are, in addition to the IT $50,000 need from prior use or prior surplus. So that makes that not hurt the bottom line for the General Fund. The next steps that I'd like to talk about, and I think most important tonight to get direction from City Council, is there has been a lot of information, and there's a lot for you to consider as far as where we are and where you want to take the General Fund and all these departments. So we will work through three options, the bare bones, all the way up to the top, and let you know what that gets us and where you want to go. Again, this is pending. When we come back on the 31st, once we get the Harris County appraisal letter and get those final amounts more in line, this could change to the positive. So again, this is just to kind of understand from now until the 31st where we would be if nothing changes. So you're not locked into this, you're not going to vote on this tonight, but it is, I feel, important for Council to see the raw picture and to understand what your comfort level is as far as when we go to set the tax rate, where you want to take this. So on this slide, on the far left, you'll see the current rate. So you have basically what's called a numerical rate, and that's 45 or 46 cents that we showed earlier in the presentation, and then the next two numbers are the O and M and your debt portion of the rate. So working from left to right, the next column is what I'm calling your no-new revenue. So this is if we do not move the mark. We calculate the formula, we do same on same properties, and we assume that we are having no-new values, then we would be looking at the no-new revenue. That means at the very bottom, as you can see, we'll need to go back and cut approximately 480. And why 480 is because if you're looking at your 313, this rate also creates a new deficit. So the 480 is two things together, of us having to go back and not only make up for the loss, but make up for the loss that the no-new revenue rate will also give us. The 2.5% option, this is where we start to go over that no-new revenue rate, and really the comfort level and the pulse of this City Council to give us direction, if that's where we want to go in our final presentations. So the 2.5% option, you can see their numericals are going up, but then you can also see in the breakout between your operating and maintenance, that going slowly up from the 34 to the 35 cents to the 37 cents, which is deriving the money that goes into your General Fund departments. So even at the 2.5% option, we've got some work to do. We'd be looking at still cutting approximately $300,000. And then, all the way to the right, your 3.5% option, which is very aggressive, it is taking up to the state cap. At that point, we could balance the budget with the 313 off the books, as well as doing all the decision packages that are in there currently. At the very bottom, you'll see on the right, the word unused increment. So we do, with the new formula, with SB2, a long time ago, when they changed the formulas and the way that the terms are named for your tax calculations, they did a couple of different things. So we have, you'll hear sometimes talk about in your TML conferences, the de minimis rate. De minimis was another additional tax that was, they called it the fire truck rate, so you can drive up to $500,000 if you have a capital need. The other option that SB2 created was unused increment. So in a three-year window, if you don't go up to the 3.5%, then you're able to bank those. So this is what we have left, is .016221 in our bank. That could also be added to the 3.5%, and it doesn't affect going to the electorate and a voter if you need to use that increment. So again, wildly different options here. Again, premise of looking at where we are. Most of the budgets, if you've taken the liberty of going through there, you'll see how many cuts our departments and our directors make. So from the very beginning, I was very clear, this is going to be a tight year. It ended up being that we didn't have that many new values, so most of the directors, unless it was forced upon them with a contract or something, you'll see a lot of negatives, and they've taken liberty of really cutting as far as they can. So some of these one-time expenses are high, and we do have them in the budget, but on the opposite side of that, the directors have been very frugal in cutting in different I'll stop right there.
So the $800,000 that we set aside, would this be a good time to use some of that?
It would. I think we could definitely, I would recommend on the one-time expenses, making sure anything that's going to be a reoccurring cost and that we're able to sustain it moving forward would be important. But there are a lot of one-time costs that we could carve out, and we could use that as another revenue.
Just something to think about, because I know Mayor's always been wanting to decrease it, and now I'm seeing it up, and it's got, Mayor, I'm frustrated, because we've been seeing a decline, and now, after this freeway, it's, now we've got to bring it up. But that warehouse that we're looking at, the refrigerator, that's not freezer, it's not going to affect this coming year, right? It's probably going to be a year now?
Correct. I mean, one of the other revenue streams we did not talk about is, we got a good amount of permit fees on, like, for instance, a warehouse for transwestern sides. So we will probably, if that were to be an approved project, that you have permit fees in addition to the property tax fees, but we probably wouldn't recognize those till, like, '26, because they do the evaluations on January.
Buddy?
The cost for an EDC director, what would that?
So the interdepartmental transfers on your General Fund summary sheet, you can see that's gone down to, last year, we had it at 110. Prior to that, when we had two positions over there, we were transferring, and transferring meaning, the city held the positions even prior, so when we had an admin assistant and a director's position, they're paid as an employee of the city, and then we transfer EDC money back into the General Fund. So we were at about $290,000 for admin costs, and then we've gone down to 110. So part of that transfer, we still, the EDC still uses our Finance Department, our Public Affairs Department, our GIS Department, so those costs... affairs department, our GIS department. So those costs come as a transfer, but they've been reduced because we don't have that FTE.
This, with the new projects, some of which are already permitted and approved, like the two big ones over just across 146 at either end of Repsorth, and the cold warehouse, is this, I just want to make sure my logic is correct. We're down this year, there's deficit this year because partly the hotel and that state law and all that kind of stuff. That obviously is not going to be corrected. But with those three properties, if those three properties start next year and are counted against our 26 tax rolls, does that make this a one-year dip in our, in our income to be able to balance out our income?
Yes.
And the reason I'm asking that, I would absolutely not want to go into reserves for long-term funding. Like you said, for recurring funding, annualized funding, you don't use reserves for that kind of thing. And I would rather not touch reserves at all. But if we are confident that, or at least reasonably confident, that our budget is going to bounce back next year with at least those three properties coming on board, using part of the reserve to try and help keep taxes low for our citizens is a little bit less offensive.
What I would note, we probably, based on the starts when we were, Sean and I were talking earlier, it probably, we're probably going to have a hard year this year and a hard year next year. And then once captured on the 26, by the time we start the next fiscal year, we should start to see it. So we're probably estimating to this year and next year being low. So we'd probably have to draw down twice.
Are we sure about, I know we have Regatta Bay, but when, well, if there, hopefully there's not, but if there were to be another apartment, get off the books, would that be 2025? Or would we, do they have, how long of a time do they have once they?
So we don't know. I think you and I exchanged emails. This is not something that I missed. This is a state law. If you read through that, and it's not anything we had to control over. We were actually looking, when we first got the letters from Harris County Appraisal District, and we were surprised we were so flat, which caused us to look at what are our highest properties, apartments being one of those. So we started diving in, you know, I think Buddy actually was, went home, looked at some stuff and notified me that, you know, that we've got something at zero. And it did surprise us. I mean, we get thousand sheet, you know, HCAD details. So Mike, you know, we can't release that, but he also can't go through every thousand line to make sure what's going on there. So we did have the transwestern warehouse come on. We had a number of other commercial starts, as well as a really healthy residential year that year. So when, when we say we didn't catch it, we didn't catch it because there's a lot of detail in the information that we get from HCAD. So these numbers that we go over 2 billion include all those values, and ultimately includes the same values as well as anything new coming on the tax roll. So we didn't, we didn't feel it. And it is something from our research thus far, and the mayor has called every state rep and griped because there is, when you look at that law in section 303, they do not have to notify the city. They don't have to notice us. They don't have to ask for us for permission. There's zero. It's a state law that our great state of Texas approved, and they did it according to the state law. So I mean, if there's anybody to be upset with, we need to go to our reps.
For sure. No, but I mean, we won't know until the end of the year. Is that how it's going to work?
We get zero notifications.
So there could be a potential more, more apartments that are in this situation that we won't, the income we're expecting, we won't get.
Right. And once we looked at this, we did go through right now. So HCAD has done the evaluation in January, so you can go to the HCAD site now. So we have pulled up all of our apartments, and there's nothing showing zero except for that one apartment complex.
Okay, so we can feel pretty confident.
Right. So we feel confident right now. There's nothing else that's going to hit us for this fiscal year.
Okay.
And Jackie, I did receive a phone call from an out-of-state developer inquiring about a, an apartment building in Seabrook. Luckily, it isn't in Seabrook. It has a 7758 zip code number, and he said on the record, it says Seabrook, but it's not. It's just outside our city limit.
Yeah, I'll log it.
Somebody, somebody else has noticed.
And also like the Seabrook Town Center, when, I mean, is that not going to be possible for books on, I mean, have, I never really seen.
So that is fully worked in our building department. So they're reporting all the plans. They're, they're at the last comments. So part of the other revenue source I was going to mention is permits. So we are, we are budgeting $500,000 in expected permit fees, and that is part of the town center.
Okay.
So we are expecting, based on the building official and his reviews of the plans, they're 99% complete. So we feel very confident on that project, enough to budget towards it.
And they are, they have informed me that they're looking at fall groundbreaking.
Well, they've already done the wall.
Yeah, yeah, they're staging, they're staging right.
Just following up what Jackie brought up about the apartments. When I was looking at it, we have nine apartment complexes that are over 20 years old. One was built in 60-something. These are the ones that could fall into the low-price housing. And it's, like you said, it's an absolute unknown. If you add them all up, I think it's $183 million value, which could take a huge hit. From a business perspective, if I own an apartment complex and I can do this, why not? Because it's already been, shall we say, shown that those, there are a lot of units that go for it that are supposed to provide a percentage of their units at a lower rate, but haven't done it. They're charging full pop. And it's rampant in Houston. And again, some of these are out-of-town owners that really have no love for Seabrook at all. But just from a business perspective, I would suggest that we start looking not at this year's budget and what we're going to spend in the next calendar year, but two years down the road, maybe three years down the road. We've knocked our taxes down in the last 10 years from around 64 to 44. That's stout. And of all the things you brought up, we can't get ourselves in a position where we can't pay our employees. Because I can tell you from experience, you get behind the market, the word is out, and they're fleeing, and then you're really in a bad situation to try to make it back up because you've got to make up your reputation. And that's the biggie. We've got to maintain that reputation to attract and retain quality employees, and qualified employees. You don't have to be at the top of the game, but at least at that 80% level.
On the apartment tax bill, the state legislature does have it on the agenda to reverse that. When I say reverse it, we're not going to get any, any money back. But they want to reverse that this session. They did put a stopgap measure last session in it that helps. It just doesn't cure the whole thing. So they are, they are working very hard. Dennis and Mays and everybody's working on it. Nobody wants it. It was, it was a mistake.
Yeah. And just remember, they're the same ones that wrote it, and now they're not correcting it. And they tried to correct it once, and it didn't work, and they're still working on it. So forgive me if I don't have a whole lot of faith in that.
I, I, I think that they're going in it, so.
But even at that, they don't meet until next year.
Our, our problem is that they don't meet until spring, and it won't be passed until April, May. And so there still is, we're still at risk for a period of time. Everybody is. Houston has, has suffered the most out of any city with this. But there are other cities that are checking into it. I, I believe Pearland has one. They're still trying to find it. Again, the tax rolls are hard to decipher. And, and when they get, you know, as big as, as Pearland is, you know, five or 10 times the size of us, they, they have a lot of work to do to find it. But, and of course, they, they have seen increases because of their, their development over there. So they, it's hard to find. Anyway, yeah, that's, that's a real sore subject for me. And, and I have, I have let my state reps know this. And they're working on it.
All right. So mayor and council, I've got a few more slides. We'll go into enterprise fund a little bit, and then we'll probably stop there this evening. But again, focusing on this slide, I think preliminarily, I'd like to, if, if the tax rolls do not come in better than we're looking at currently, is there a direction that council by consensus would like to give me as far as cutting, or that there is a comfort level that there could be on the higher end that council would be willing to support? Again, this is not a vote tonight, but if there's strong support that I need to cut, I'd like to know now because the 31st is the 60th day, so I have to get you a balanced budget by that next special meeting. So your input would be extremely helpful tonight.
Again, let me ask a question. And Mike brought up a, a good point. If, if there is any funding that we can use as a stopgap anywhere, you know, I'm, I am not in favor of either one or two, believe me. But is there any, any place to find a stopgap measure through some of our reserves or some of our, our funds that we still have sitting out there?
Stabilization fund, we can certainly, yes.
I would like to look at that before I make a decision.
Okay.
I, I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I mean, it's been, it's been 10 years since we've, we've had an increase in taxes in this town. And, and I hate to go out like this.
Yeah, I'm for option one. It's because of the economy right now, the way that people are looking at it. I think that's exactly why the police station slash city hall was, you know, didn't make it. That's what the people told me that I talked to. And they're, they're hurting. So they're, they're not into like, well, if we're hurting, how, how are we spending more money? So that's how they look at it. So I'm for option one, and then use some money as a stopgap.
Option one is still a .04 increase over our current tax rate, unless I'm reading this incorrectly?
No, you're correct. Numerically, yes.
That, that's still a tax increase over what we're currently at. Obviously, you can't risk the personnel side of things. But what, where could we accept, maybe not risk, but deferred maintenance, for example? That road that is scheduled to be replaced in '25, maybe we can push it to '26 and try and do something like that. I don't like that because I don't want to end up like a couple of cities that come to mind where their infrastructure is failing across the board because they got in the habit of doing that. We don't have enough in reserves to maintain current tax rate. So I'm not sure that we're going to be able to avoid it, but because, I mean, that looks to me like that would be somewhere around 760, somewhere around there that would have to be cut from the budget. And there's, I'm just not sure there's enough fat anywhere you look at it. But again, going back to, how long is it going to be this way? Do we have a realistic path to greener pastures with the new facilities coming on board, increasing sales tax from the, from the two big ones over there? I don't, I don't myself have a good feel as to whether or not this is a two-year problem, a five-year problem, or a 10-year problem. And each one has to be addressed differently.
Okay. And looking at revenues from the building fees and all that, that, that's pretty much drying up. We're not going to get a lot from that.
So one of the things, you know, we, we looked at, we went very aggressive originally on our permit fees, and that would have been if, you know, at that point, we don't know if other developments are going to actually be approved. So we've kept it static at 500, and we felt confident in that, given that we knew how far along on the plan set for the town center that we were. But it is, I'm cautious to elevate it to where one of our scenarios was because that, essentially in the next year, that revenue stream goes away. That's a, that's a one-time as well. So anything that's a, not a continuing revenue stream that has opportunity to grow, we're cautious on that. So we, we're keeping that 500,000 flat, and we feel confident with that one.
And the other thing too, and this is for all council, is that when we have a new project coming on, there are those that are going to say no, and we may have a room full of people. They don't want it, which is fine. That's their, their, their call. But if we don't have the revenue to go with it, it's got to come from somewhere. And I think it's incumbent upon us to inform and educate our citizens that the projects, especially on the north side, those are gatahaves, especially when you consider the potential liability of those apartments. And we've got some other things too that we're facing. This is the long term. An example would be in Seascape 1, past councilman Jerry Larson's home caught on fire, 51% damaged. He'd have to come build it back, two specs, complete tear down, redo. He opted out. It's a vacant lot. That came off the rolls. And we've got some older community, I mean, older neighborhoods that are, that are facing that same thing. That's why I'm saying we have to look not just at the next year, but down the lines at it. So that's just my thoughts.
Are we taking into consideration the Ellis Cove development and?
So the 75,000 back here on our beginning slide, there is some residual new single family that we took into thought process on that. But that, what we calculated was about around $20 million. So we did have about $20 million in new home starts. And then we have, we split our property tax. So that amount that's coming to general fund would be what we're equating to about 75,000 on the current tax rate today. So I mean, 20 million is a lot, but it's still on the bottom line. And what, when you're calculating it, it's not as much as you probably think being $20 million. So those are in account. I think when they probably looked at that property in January, probably didn't have a whole lot done on the ground as they do now. So, and then we've got a number of different, you know, single families sprinkled throughout the community. So I mean, 20 million is our best estimate based on some of the building department reports that we have. So 75,000 again, until we get the final roll in is, is our best estimate. So we do have some, some new value.
So some of the, on option one and two, when we start talking about cutting these, these amounts, what are we talking about? Are we talking about CIP projects? We talking about services? What is your thoughts about what we would be cutting?
So we mentioned in some of the slides earlier, we have some one-time costs, like scanning is a one-time cost. We have some software that's a one-time, and then they have the reoccurring cost that's lower. So we could go back and break out anything that's a one-time cost, and, and that would be a good candidate to put into the stabilization fund because we wouldn't have that again. We can see what that does to reduce the overall, and then look at some of the employer-related costs and see what we can plug back in and kind of play that balancing act there to get it, you know, closer to, say, option no new revenue or, or lower, or just above that.
Did, I didn't see anything on city secretary budget. So Rachel, did you turn in a budget?
Yes, sir. That was the legislative budget.
Okay.
The scanning does fall under me.
Right. Because then obviously if, you know, we, this coming in 2025, in May, you have an election, and then you're going to have another one in '26. So you, you know, we have those. So, and I've heard there, I, no one ever knew that they were that expensive to put on. When I first found out that there was like, one was 10,000, I couldn't believe it. Then they broke it down and explained it, but I was like, I never knew an election cost that much. Now it's even more, I guess, because of inflation. But the, the big thing for me is, one, you have a budget. But the, the big thing for me is, one, you have a budget because that was a problem in past years that you didn't. I think the police need the two officers at least, maybe more. I'm not 100% sure. Did you guys get your ATVs? Did you already get those? Okay. So, but I like the, just what was said, one-time items. We can use that, that surplus to, to take care of that. I bet you that brings that from 480, I bet you it brings it down a lot. So you get a lot closer.
Can I ask about the scanning for $138,000? What is that?
So it, it is a lot. It's a company that would have to come in, you have to see the rooms of public works. There's a lot of old, permanent commercial plans and things like that that just were never digitized. You know, it, they pile up, they pile up, they're taking up rooms over there at this point. And many of them are permanent records for the most part because, and Nick, you can correct me, but they, commercial plans are permanent because you have to keep them even a certain amount of years past the time that that building no longer, say it blew down, we still have to keep it several years thereafter. So we consider those pretty much permanent records. And so that's where our bulk of expenses, 113,000 of that, is trying to get those rooms digitized that never were. These are like even from, I believe, from the inception of the city, some of those.
I mean, does that really have to go right now, though, when we're in such a time? I mean, I think we should push that off, in my opinion. That's a lot of money right there. We, I mean, just for another year, just get out of the slump.
Yeah. And, and a lot of these items that we're in, I mean, not giving you guys a balanced budget tonight is, is back on me. So I, I have to choose from all those decision packages and meeting with the directors based on priority. So yes, we can certainly change that up and, and push some things and, and look at some other options and filtrating part of the 800,000 in and see where we're at.
I'd much rather see our, the staff paid accordingly and before scanning. I know that needs to be done, I totally get it. But we could still go pull it if it comes up until the paper copy, until we can get it and for, to get them digitized.
So at this point, I'm sorry. At this point, we would come back next session and talk about what kinds of items that we might be able to find to cut. Is that correct? Is that?
So, yeah. So based on your input tonight, I'll go back. Again, the 31st, I'm required to give you a balanced budget. We just had so many revenue changes in this one, I wanted to get some feedback from, from council. So we can pull, we can use the stabilization fund. So that won't really be a decision for y'all. I'll, I'll, I'll package a balanced budget. The deciding factor, it sounds like, will be based on when we get the tax rolls in, which one of these options do we want to land on? And I'll, I'll create a couple of different scenarios. So if I can get as much squeezed in, but I still have some reoccurring cost, those, that tax rate may come into play if I have something that we don't want to pull out of one-time, our stabilization fund. So in other words, if it's going to keep happening, you want to build it into your tax rate.
Well, the stabilization fund was set aside for businesses that may need it during the construction of 146, correct?
That was for cities, our sales tax. So when we were, again, we were fortunate, we just kept trucking up on sales tax revenue. And 4%, I think is the lowest since I've been here that we've, you know, we've kind of stabilized.
So, so that fund is essentially usable at this point?
It is.
Because we don't see that, you know, we don't know whether this, this current economy is, is going to change in the near future or not. We don't think so. But, but, you know, if it does, 800,000, if, if we cut, if we only use half of that, we could be, we could be sitting pretty good. That with the, with the scanning, I, I know, don't, don't get me wrong, the scanning is important. Those files are at risk. And if we lose those files, we could be in deep mire. But, but again, we, we, it's something that needs to be done. It's something that has, has, we, we just don't have the money year after year to do it. And we have been trying to catch up. We do it every year. The problem is, it's still, it's still at risk. And are we willing to gamble another year? I am. I mean, it's, like you say, some of them are from the beginning of, in the 60s. We hate to lose those files. But, you know, what's another year? I, I think that if, I think it's more important to try and get to the no new revenue rate, in my opinion, than, than. I, we, we can't get to the current rate, so let's just try, let's just try, see what we can cut. And if we use, like I say, if we use half of it and we, we do some scanning, I think we can make up for that 480 and keep it.
Okay.
I hate to put that on you because I know, I know it's a lot of work.
Exactly the feedback I needed. I mean, again, this has been a challenging year on a couple of fronts as far as our revenue. So I appreciate council's input and comments because it helps me to go back and, and make that final decision, so.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe do the oldest ones if we could look at them and see, because they'll start to fade, and then we're really in trouble. So get the, get the ones that we can really get in and scan.
We're just hoping, we're just hoping when we lift them, they don't fall.
Yeah, exactly. It still could be a free program, whatever. But, but like Tom said, too, as well, with the new, the election coming up, things could change drastically, too, and could help a lot of the citizens as well because gas prices and everything could start dwindling, so we don't know.
I mean, we do have five projects. I mean, we have two warehouse projects, and we have three apartment, tell projects coming. So it does seem that this is a, a bump in the road. And I would love personally to see it under 500, but, you know, I don't know that we'll be able to do that. But that would be, optically, that would be the, our best, best move, in my opinion. And coming up with some really great ideas and how we might be able to budget ourselves going through it. Yes, 25 and 6 is a problem.
I would like to see what you're going to cut. And, because all we're doing is kicking the can down the road. And so identify what's going to be cut. Take a quick, wild guess as to what the budget's going to be increased for the following year and where we're going to be in terms of projected revenues, just based on what happens this year with our property taxes and, and sales taxes. So we can kind of take a look at it. Because at some point, somebody's going to have to swallow the pill.
Yep.
And going back, like I said, we, we've cut taxes 20% in 10 years, 20 cents in 10 years. That's stout. And, and I, you know, it's all grand to say, yes, the homeowners are hurting and, and they, you know, they don't want to pay any more taxes. I understand that. But we also have employees that have to buy a loaf of bread, a quart of milk, or whatever. And they've got to have the funds to do that, or they'll truck it on down the road. If we're out in Midland, Odessa, we'd have a better lock on it, but we're not. I mean, NASA's just 15 minutes away.
The economy's gone up 30%. We only got up 3% in our wages. So that don't make sense.
Yeah. I think, you know, in looking at another pass on the budget, COLA is extremely important. Again, my concern with the 20% increase that the employees have had on health insurance, it, it's hurting for those that have the higher coverage. So I'd definitely like to, with some of the comments, look at the stabilization fund and then take another look at the COLA as well.
Yeah. If they look at the paycheck this year and it's smaller than the one for last year, Ascenia's going to be busy.
Ascenia's already busy.
Any other questions or comments?
I think we're all on the same page as much.
Okay. I'm going to touch briefly on enterprise again. Thank you for the direction on the general fund side. And then we'll hold, we've got a number of special funds. I'm not going to go through those tonight. We'll finalize those and package this along with the general fund at your next meeting as well as your final CIP. So the enterprise fund, again, this is a separate fund that is pretty much funded with water, our wastewater, our sanitation. And it's a enterprise fund in that those fees are collected, the expenses, the cost center is completely separate than your general fund. The city of Pasadena is who we get the water for our residents and our businesses from. And so the other thing on this enterprise fund right now, we are not proposing any additional rate adjustments to our water, our wastewater. As you recall, we have had some pretty significant increases on the water and wastewater, much like our salaries for employees. Every five years, we do a study. We look at what infrastructure costs are going to take to make sure our water and our wastewater run properly in now and into the future. And that all goes into the rate calculation. So we did take some pretty significant increases. We do have a new wastewater plant that was part of it. And then we also had a pretty significant increase from who we get the water from, which is the city of Pasadena. We are in the midst, just as you will recall, that you commissioned us going out for a water feasibility study. We did have a meeting today, and I hope to report here in the next couple of meetings, there was small glimmers of hope, but not anything immediate. But it does look like there might be some solutions long-term for the city, looking to be in a different position. So the enterprise fund, the water that we get from Pasadena, we turn around and charge. So this is the expenditures by those different departments, water, wastewater, sanitation being the collections by waste management. And then our utility billing are the different divisions. So on the expenses side, services is our number one, which is where we're deriving the waste management from, where we're getting the water from. So those are in and out expense. Revenues, again, in correlation with the expenses, you have the water sales, water sales being the highest, water expenses being the highest. So it's an in and out function of the enterprise fund. And then, again, sewer and sanitation. We have a transfer for the stabilization fund, and that probably should be struck. As you recall, when we had such high increase, increases, we had some money that we were sticking back. So that is no longer applicable. But we do have some transfers that go into this fund as well as other billing fees and then interest income. So it makes up some of those smaller ones. There's really not a whole lot of significant changes in our three departments to really make note of. We do have a couple of decision packages that, again, we'd like to look. This, this division or this fund is very healthy right now, so we do have some flexibility of pulling these as a one-time as far as the equipment there on the second bullet point. And then we still have the personnel issues that we had in the general fund on the utility side. So these are not currently in, and we can certainly take a look at those. This enterprise fund is contingent, as I mentioned, on the city of Pasadena. We do have a contract with the city of Pasadena. We do not have letter in hand yet. So in other words, every year, just like every one of our contractors, we get a letter from them. And as everybody recalls, in that contract, it is from the city of Houston on down to the southeast plant to us as a co-participant under the city of Pasadena. What does that mean? It means that the city of Houston is constantly doing improvements to the distribution center, which gets it to Pasadena, which gets it to Seabrook. We unfortunately have no control over what capital improvements they're doing on the operations and maintenance side included. And per our contract, we have to brunt those increases. So all that said, I, until I get the letter from the city of Pasadena at this point, we are not proposing any rate changes, and it should be flat. But that could change if anything is coming down from Pasadena we're unaware of. So that concludes tonight for general fund and enterprise fund. If there is any additional questions or comments.
Okay. I think we'll adjourn the work session into the regular session.
4.0 new business. 4.1, consider to take all appropriate action on the approval of amendment to the professional services agreement between the city of Seabrook and Browns Rental Watford Architects for architectural services in the amount, in the amount of 35,000, and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents. This project is part of the 2023 bond program.
So Mayor and Council, you previously approved a architectural agreement with BRW, which is our contractor and architect for the expansion on the fire station. As we were working through the process, we were approached by the architect for some geotechnical work. We currently do not have an on-call, a firm that can do geotechnical work. We are going to go out to bid so that we can have some on-call services in the future. However, at this point, to proceed with trying to get this project done, we're recommending to do a subcontract under BRW, and this is what the AIA amendment is. So the amendment before you tonight for the survey and the geotechnical would be an additional 35,000. And this does change our budget a little bit on this project. So we'll be reporting back as we get closer into drawings on how that affects the bottom line. But this would put the architectural plus survey plus geotechnical at 299 if this amendment is approved.
Move to approve 4.1.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Do we hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. It's 7:25.